We're going to get started now. Are you ready, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to October 8th. I'd like to begin and open our public meeting. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the State Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Department of Education, Secretary of Press Corps -- sorry, Secretary of State's Office, and notice has been given to the State House Press Corps, the Governor's Office, and the State Board Agenda Subscriber. And as a quorum is present, this meeting will now come to order. May I please have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you very much, Board Member Bennett. And may I have a second? Thank you. Appreciate it, Vice President. Thank you, sir. And now that we have the meeting approved, we'll go ahead and read this next statement to adjourn to executive session. Whereas in order to protect the personal privacy and to avoid situations wherein the public interest might be dis-served, the Open Public Meetings Act permits public bodies to exclude the public from that portion of a meeting at which certain matters are discussed. Now therefore be it resolved that consistent with the provision of NJSA 10:4-12B, the State Board of Education will now adjourn to executive session to discuss personnel and legal matters. May I please have a motion? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. And may I please have a second?
Sure.
Thank you very much. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you very much. I should say we have Jack Benaro, Lane Barbrough, and Arceleao Conte online joining us. Thank you. All right. So we will be back, I believe, at 10:00 a.m., and we'll start the public portion of the meeting then. Thank you very much, everyone.
Remember that teacher who changed your life? You could be that teacher. New Jersey has some of the best public schools in the country with competitive salaries and valuable benefits. Be that teacher. Visit teachinspire nj.gov.
Si eres un maestro, has tenido a tus estudiantes decirte lo que les importa. Y para todos los que lo hacen, más se sienten así pero no lo dicen. Recuerda aquel maestro que cambió tu vida? Tú eres ese maestro para mucha gente. ¡enseña, inspira, Nueva Jersey! Si eres un maestro, probablemente has tenido a tus estudiantes decirte lo que les importa. Y para todos los que lo hacen, más se sienten así pero no lo dicen. No sabes cuántos, pero es más de lo que piensas. Porque has hecho más que enseñar, has inspirado. ¿Recuerdas aquel maestro que cambió tu vida? Tú eres ese maestro para mucha gente. ¡enseña, inspira, Nueva Jersey!
Recuerda aquel maestro que le cambió la vida? Usted podría ser ese maestro en Nueva Jersey. Unirse a la comunidad de educadores que ayudará a formar a la próxima generación. Nueva Jersey cuenta con algunas de las mejores escuelas públicas del país, con salarios competitivos, beneficios atractivos y un sólido plan de pensiones. Sea ese maestro. Deje huella. Enseñe, inspire. Nueva Jersey. Visite teachinspire nj.gov
Recuerda aquel maestro que cambió tu vida? Tú eres ese maestro para mucha gente. ¡enseña, inspira, Nueva Jersey! Te ayudará a formar a la próxima generación junto a una comunidad dedicada a educadores. Nueva Jersey tiene algunas de las mejores escuelas públicas del país, con salarios competitivos, beneficios atractivos y un sólido plan de pensiones. Así que sea ese maestro. Impacta. ¡Teach, Inspire, Nueva Jersey! Para aprender más, visita teachinspire nj.gov Si eres un maestro, probablemente has tenido a tus estudiantes decirte lo que les importa. Y para todos los que lo hacen, más se sienten así pero no lo dicen. ¿Recuerdas aquel maestro que cambió tu vida? Tú eres ese maestro para mucha gente. ¡enseña, inspira, Nueva Jersey!
Recuerda aquel maestro que le cambió la vida? Usted podría ser ese maestro en Nueva Jersey. Unirse a la comunidad de educadores que ayudará a formar a la próxima generación. Nueva Jersey cuenta con algunas de las mejores escuelas públicas del país, con salarios competitivos, beneficios atractivos y un sólido plan de pensiones. Sea ese maestro. Deje huella. Enseñe, inspire. Nueva Jersey. Visite teachinspire nj.gov Visite teachinspire nj.gov.
Remember that teacher who changed your life? You could be that teacher. New Jersey has some of the best public schools in the country with competitive salaries and valuable benefits. Be that teacher. Visit teachinspire nj.gov. Remember that teacher who changed your life? You could be that teacher, Izzy. You'll help shape the next generation alongside a dedicated community of educators. New Jersey has some of the best public schools in the country with competitive salaries, valuable benefits, and a solid pension plan. So be that teacher. Make an impact. Teach Inspire New Jersey. To learn more, visit teachinspire nj.gov.
The readoption of amendments of Chapter 8 Standards and Assessment. As this topic is actually on today's agenda at adoption level, I'll forego my report at this point. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Johnson. Your leadership is greatly appreciated. Thank you. We have the National Association of School Board Education Delegate Election and Ballot for Resolution on the Proposed By-Law Changes. So those are the, each of the states in the country that are involved. It's the National Association of School Board Education. I'm honored to have served it, served on it for seven, seven years now. And I would like to let you know they will have an election and at their annual business meeting on Wednesday, October 29th. And so we will have the annual business meeting. We're going to send in our vote for that. And the vote will be on, we have to send it in by Monday, October 13th. So I'd just like to let you know that that's occurring. And they do really good work. So it's great to hear. I've been fortunate enough to go three or four times to their annual meetings. And they speak about everything from what's happening locally in their state, but how it's affecting all the national federal world and how it's affecting their, their budgets and their curriculum and, and everything that they do. And it's always good to hear because each state is a little bit different, certainly. The way they're managed is different, certainly. And to hear from them and to hear all of their excitement, stressors, all the different things that happen, it's always good to have a wider perspective. And it brings more to our board when I'm able to share those things that have happened nationally. So it's an important organization that works along with the government in DC as they make laws on education. So I hope to go there the end of this month. And I'll be happy to give back feedback in November, what was said and the different things that were mentioned. So just mentioning that now. The nominee for the chair-elect for the National Association of School Boards is Fern Disjarden. She's from Maine. The nominee for Secretary Treasurer is Matt Donaldson. He's from Georgia. The nominee from the Northwestern Area Director is from Delaware, Nisha Lodhavia. Unless the school board objects, there's only one candidate for each position. And I'd like to ask our Director of the State Board, Diane Shoner, to please submit votes in their behalf so that we are on record as continuing to participate, even though there are no, no split votes going on, just so that they know that we care very much what happens federally. So is there anybody who objects to us doing so? Okay. So we'll go ahead and do that. I don't think we need a vote on that, do we? Okay, all right. Yes, the, the bylaws will also be discussed then for the National Association. And so we'll, we'll go ahead and I've already reviewed them. And I'd like to go ahead and, and say that New Jersey agrees with what they've suggested. It's, it's about participation, inclusion, and being part of what's happening in DC. And it's, it's all good things for education to stay with the federal government oversight over all the states. So I'd like to go ahead and do that.
Just a quick question. I had a couple of things that I wanted, can I just pass those on to you? I looked at it.
Sure. Is there anything you object to that we should not vote for? Okay, yeah, absolutely. Cause I, I will be there and relay that. Thank you. All right. So we have a petition for rulemaking also. Rosemary Caton or Catan, I'm not sure how she pronounces it, received, the state board received a petition for rulemaking from Rosemary Caton for May, on May 5th, 2025. The petitioner requested amendments to Chapter 9B to allow holders of a multi-state registered professional nursing license issued by a state board of nursing that participates in the nurse licensure compact called the NLC to qualify for a substitute school nurse, non-instructional credential, or an educational services certificate with school nurse endorsement. At our August state board meeting, I announced that Commissioner Daymer and I were determined, and, and we determined that an additional 90 days were needed to deliberate and allow time for consultation with the New Jersey Board of Nursing. Those issues have been discussed. We have since determined, the commissioner and myself, that the best course of action is to approve the petitioner's requested amendments with additional necessary changes at NJAC 6A: NB-14.4. The department will be discussing the amendments at NJAC 6A: 9B-75, 14.3, and 14.4 later today during the items for consideration, Item D. So in order to meet the OAL and the state board requirements for timely processing of rules related to approved petitions, the state board will be expediting this rulemaking and moving to proposal level next month. I strongly encourage interested parties to submit written comments on the proposed rules and remind you that in-person public testimony will be received in January of 2026. And that is all from my end. And I'd like to please turn the meeting over to our wonderful Commissioner, Mr. Daymer.
Thank you, Madam President. So this is one of the most exciting days of the year. And it marks the 56th year that the New Jersey Department of Education has selected a New Jersey State Teacher of the Year. I'm so lucky to continue that tradition of honoring and celebrating extraordinary educators. This award falls under the Governor's Educator of the Year Program, which provides a well-deserved platform to amplify teacher voice and celebrate our state's great educators. I'd ask you all to look, we put out some, some different videos through most of, mostly through our social media channels. You can see videos about some of the amazing educators in our state this year. And we're going to continue to do that throughout the, the rest of this year. And before announcing and recognizing our newest State Teacher of the Year, I want to take a moment to acknowledge our outgoing State Teacher of the Year, Stephanie Lockenhour. During Stephanie's six-month sabbatical at the department, she served as a positive and uplifting representative for the teaching profession, making public appearances statewide, speaking about the importance of mindfulness, and finding every possible moment to speak about, or to celebrate, excuse me, our state's passionate and dedicated educators. So get this, these are some, some of the things that she's been able to do. She got to visit the Google headquarters in California. She went to space camp at the United States Space and Rocket Center in Huntsville, Alabama, and spent time collaborating with other State Teachers of the Year throughout the country. And in January, she will attend the National Football Championship in Miami, Florida. So it's not all bad. Stephanie participated in national events. Stephanie participated in national events and conferences to learn and share best practices and strategies with schools across the state. Stephanie, thank you for all the hard work. And with that, I want to turn over to you for some remarks.
Thank you, Commissioner Damer. This year has been the greatest honor of my life, hands down. And I can't begin anywhere besides starting with gratitude. There's so many people that I'm grateful for and many of them are right here in this room. I want to start by thanking NJ DOE for sponsoring this program and making this a possibility. NJEA for all that you do to support the program and the car, all the things, all the platforms. And ETS for sponsoring our sabbatical. And also the technology budget this year is amazing and I could not have done those things without that support. And of course, our county and state teachers of the year for walking alongside me on this journey, for partnering with me in so many capacities. And all of this, I had someone side by side with me and that person is Nancy Bassant, who really, yeah. Honestly, I wish I could take her with me. If she could just organize the rest of my life, that would be great. And of course Pete Madzagati, who thank him for believing in me and for also helping me to, to do the Teacher Climate and Culture Institute that the DOE put together this year. That was amazing. And Jordan Schiff for all of your leadership and support and belief in me. So this year I got to do some really cool things. Aside from going to space camp, which that was very fun. But I got to go visit classrooms across New Jersey. I went to all 21 counties. I've been to countless schools and I got to see the amazing things that are happening there. And what I saw everywhere I went is that there is deep drive. There's deep passion and there's deep commitment for learning, but also for seeing our students' growth in the classroom and beyond the classroom. It's not just about our lessons. It's about where are we going in the future? How are we going to support our kids as they go out there into the world? And I've been honored to watch that every place that I've been, everywhere that I've been. I've been able to share some professional development workshops as much as possible. We let glitter settle all over New Jersey. I left glitter literally everywhere I went. There are glitter jars everywhere. There was glitter here also. We made a little bit of a mess in the DOE. And another really cool thing I got to do was working at the DOE here and having a cubicle here, which I never had a cubicle before. I'm not sure if I'm meant for that life. So it was good that it was like part-time, like a little cubicle, a little classroom. Like that's, it was a, it was a good mix. And I am so grateful that I got to work with SEL Department. And right now on the Department of Education, our website, there is a mindfulness section that I was able to help partner with. So that was one of the things I'm most proud of. So while this chapter is closing and I'm stepping out, I will always be the 2025 New Jersey State Teacher of the Year. And I continue to continue this work to partner alongside teachers, to see the different ways that we can grow and support each other. And most excitingly, to step up and work with our new 2026 New Jersey State Teacher of the Year. I know that this person is going to do amazing things and I can't wait to see where it takes them. Education is not meant to be done alone. It is a community event. It involves all of us. And I'm so grateful to be an educator in New Jersey where we understand this partnership and we truly work together. So thank you for working with me. And I'll take it back to you, Commissioner Damer.
If there's any question, anybody wondering why she was a Teacher of the Year? I think we just answered that question. So thank you, Stephanie. It's been great and we look forward to continuing our, our work together. With that, I get to turn it over to Dr. Jordan Schiff for the rest of our presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let's give another round of applause for Stephanie. Such a wonderful ambassador, an extraordinary educator and a wonderful person as well. Congratulations. Thank you, Commissioner. I am thrilled to be here today to announce and name the 2025-26 New Jersey State Teacher of the Year. But before we do, I have a few words, I have a few people that I would like to acknowledge who have helped to support the State Teacher of the Year Program. The newest New Jersey State Teacher of the Year will join a family of other outstanding New Jersey educators who continually strive to make a difference in education on the state, national, and international levels. I would like to acknowledge the veteran New Jersey State Teacher of the Year family members who are in attendance today. As I call each State Teacher of the Year, please stand so that we may recognize your continued efforts in making this program so successful. First, the 1999-2000 New Jersey State Teacher of the Year, Catherine Bisset. The 2003-2004 New Jersey State Teacher of the Year, Diane Cummins. The 2005-2006 New Jersey State Teacher of the Year, Bob Goodman. The 2008-2009 New Jersey State Teacher of the Year, Jean Moosie. The 2009-2010 New Jersey State Teacher of the Year, Mary Ann Woods Murphy. The 2013-2014 New Jersey State Teacher of the Year, Kathy Ascini. The 2016-2017 New Jersey State Teacher of the Year, Arjean Safari. The 2021-2022 New Jersey State Teacher of the Year, Teresa Maugh. The 2022-2023 New Jersey State Teacher of the Year, Christine Gertan. The 2023-2024 New Jersey State Teacher of the Year, Joe Nappi. And finally, our outgoing New Jersey State Teacher of the Year from 2024-2025, Stephanie Lockenhour. Congratulations to all of our New Jersey State Teachers of the Year. Again, extraordinary, extraordinary ambassadors, extraordinary educators, extraordinary people. One more big round of applause, please. I would like to acknowledge the state-level panel members for committing their time, energy, and expertise to selecting the New Jersey State Teacher of the Year. If a panel member is in attendance, please stand to be recognized now. Susan Berry, English Language Arts Standards Coordinator at the New Jersey Department of Education. Diane Cummins, member of the New Jersey Council of State Teachers of the Year and the 2003-2004 New Jersey State Teacher of the Year. Vincent DeLucia, former Director of Special Projects at the New Jersey School Boards Association. Vicky Duff, Coordinator of Professional Learning at the New Jersey Principals and Supervisors Association. Mark Jacobus, School Business Administrator at the Elmwood, at the Elmwood Board of Education, representing the New Jersey Association of School Business Officials. Stephanie Lockenhour, our former State Teacher of the Year, 2024-2025. Teresa Maugh, Co-Chair of the New Jersey County Teachers of the Year Network and the 2021-2022 New Jersey State Teacher of the Year. Patel Robertson, the Vice President of the New Jersey Education Association. Cheryl Roseborough, President of the New Jersey Parent Teacher Association. Kathleen Turner, former District Superintendent of Ocean City School District, representing the New Jersey Association of School Administrators. Thank you to the entire panel for your contributions to the program, which helped make it such a success. The panel. Let's give another round of applause, please. Now I am all assured with, that we are all waiting on the edge of our seats to find out who will be the next New Jersey State Teacher of the Year. Therefore, without further ado, let's play the 2025-2026 New Jersey State Teacher of the Year Showcase Video, giving us a glimpse into why this teacher is so extraordinary.
Ms. Ober is deserving of this recognition because she truly cares about the students and the community up here at Freehold Borough.
She looks for things to do outside in the larger community because she wants to be involved and she wants to make sure our students have an impact in the overall community.
Ms. Ober in the classroom, I think her, her gift is really the ability to recognize the various learners in the classroom. And she does it in a way that infuses technology to help them understand whatever the concept is.
I think Ms. Ober is deserving of recognition because she really takes the time to build strong relationships with her students. She gets to know them on a deeper level. She really advocates for her students and she finds many opportunities for them to learn and grow.
So in the classroom, she's always keeping her kids engaged. She's fun-loving. The kids absolutely adore the fact that she comes to work every day with a smile on her face.
What being a teacher means to me is it's just such an important responsibility to be there for your students. I think when you're becoming a teacher, there's emphasis on, you know, your ability to teach academics. But I think what's really at the heart of teaching is getting to know your students and learning that'll get to know you. So I think it means just showing up and being your authentic self so that your students can show up and do the same thing.
You're a really good teacher and you have like really good passion for students. You don't let your students give up. You always try to, to take out their best.
I want them to walk away and know that I was always in their corner and I was always there for them. Because I think that's the most important thing we can do as teachers. Academics are important, but having kids now that they have a space where they belong and there's somebody who sees them, I think that's the most beautiful part about what we do as teachers.
26, New Jersey State Teacher of the Year, Gillian Ober.
Good morning, everyone. I just want to start by thanking Commissioner Kevin Damer, our State Board President, Kathy Goldenberg, and our esteemed board members for this recognition. It is such an incredible honor to stand here today as the 2025-2026 State Teacher of the Year. I'd also like to introduce my special guests here with me today. So if you could please stand when I say your name. We have Dr. Lester Rikens, Monmouth Executive County Superintendent. Dr. Deborah Bliznik, Monmouth County Education Specialist. Asia Michael, Superintendent of Freehold Borough Schools. John Brovac, Principal of Freehold Intermediate School. Patrick Mohren, Principal of Park Avenue Elementary School. Stephanie Cholak, our Freehold Borough Union President. My amazing parents, Mary Beth and Andrew Ober. And my longtime educational mentor and friend, Dr. Denise Ferlow. Lastly, I want to acknowledge and thank my incredible cohort of county teachers of the year across the state of New Jersey and the State Teacher of the Year finalists, Pamela Eng, Sean Hogs, RT Malia, and John Palsy. I am so lucky to be surrounded and supported by this group of truly exceptional educators. And this, this title, we're all deserving of it. I have an incredible team alongside me as this journey begins. So when I sat down to write this speech, I, I couldn't help but ask myself, how did I get here? And the funny thing is, I, I actually, I had no idea I wanted to be a teacher. And it took me about 26 countries and a trip around the globe to find my calling. The moment I knew I wanted to be a teacher was actually in the middle of a monsoon, soaked to the bone, but somehow also still sweating in Phnom Penh, Thailand. Rain was pelting down outside of my classroom. The whole town was flooded and my classroom was quickly turning into a bit of a kiddie pool. And in that moment, I thought to myself, how am I not miserable right now? And I looked around my classroom. My students were laughing and working together on this project. They were chatting in English and just showing they'd made so much progress that year. And I was just filled with pure joy. I knew in that moment that teaching was my calling. I think sometimes we learn the most about ourselves when we sit in our discomfort. I was living in a town on the other side of the world in conditions that I had never experienced before in my life and I was uncomfortable. But that discomfort brought out in me the things that truly drive and inspire me. Seeing those kids learn and grow gave my work meaning. My discomfort revealed my passion. Now in my classroom, I see my students sit through sometimes that same discomfort and I'm so lucky to be the one to help them navigate this experience to find their excellence, to find their passion in this world. These lessons from Thailand have guided me all the way back home to Freehold Borough, where I now teach seventh grade multilingual learners. Students who remind me daily of the courage it takes to build a new life in a new language. Many of my students are newcomers or have experienced interrupted schooling. And my classroom has become more than just a place to learn. I try to make it a sanctuary, a place where students feel seen, safe, and celebrated for who they are and all that they bring. As an educator, I believe deeply in the power of respect. Respect for each child's journey and respect for multilingualism as a superpower. My students teach me what bravery looks like every single day. They think, dream, and learn in more than one language. That's not a deficit, it's a gift. And it's one I will spend my career honoring and amplifying. Beyond the classroom, I proudly wear the hats of author, university professor, advocate, and presenter. I love to use the part of my brain where I contribute to scholarly conversations in journals and textbooks. And I find such inspiration in helping to train pre-service and current teachers at Monmouth and Georgian Court universities. I've shared my knowledge of working with multilingual learners at state conferences and I am so looking forward to the opportunities this year to connect with educators at conferences across the country and learn from one another. But perhaps my proudest moments and accomplishments come from the relationships that, that last long after my students leave my classroom. The conversations in the hallway, asking for advice, the excitement of running into each other at the mall, the quiet gratitude from families who know I'm in their corner, not just as a teacher, but as an advocate. To me, being an educator means standing in the gap between what is and what can be and doing everything in our power to make sure every child feels that their voice matters. As the 2025-2026 New Jersey State Teacher of the Year, I am so excited and lucky to begin this journey. I have been given this title and I do not plan to waste it. I will not only serve as ambassador of the teaching profession on the state and national levels, but as an educational leader and advocate always. Thank you so much.
Celebrating excellence is one of the most important things we do. She is just an absolutely tremendous educator and we're, we're so proud of her and her accomplishments. But we also have a few other people because there, it's not just about the title, Gillian. It's about all of the other goodies that you're going to be able to receive. Our first partner is from the Educational Testing Services, Joe Bert Uvoya, a General Manager at the Global Philanthropy. Joe Bert, please come up to say a few words at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff, and good morning, everyone. I'm Joe Bert Abueva. It's an honor to join you today on behalf of ETS to celebrate one of New Jersey's finest educators. At ETS, we believe that great teaching doesn't just change classrooms, it transforms communities. That's why we are proud to sponsor the New Jersey State Teacher of the Year program and to support its mission of elevating excellence in education. Each year, ETS underwrites a sabbatical for the State Teacher of the Year, allowing them to step beyond their classroom and share their expertise, passion, and vision with educators across the state. It's our way of saying, your voice matters, your leadership matters, and your journey deserves to be amplified. This year, we are thrilled to recognize Gillian Ober of Park Avenue Elementary School and the Freehold Borough School District. Gillian's work exemplifies the kind of impact that ripples outward, nurturing not only her students, but also inspiring her colleagues and community. Her commitment to equity, creativity, and student-centered learning is exactly what New Jersey needs more of. Gillian, we are proud to work beside you as you begin this exciting chapter. May your sabbatical be filled with meaningful conversations, bold ideas, and the joy of knowing your work is helping shape the future of education in our state. Thank you, and I will now turn it back to Dr. Schiff. Congratulations.
Thank you, Joeber, for being with us here today. We appreciate that ETS continues to generously participate in this program by donating $50,000 in funding to the New Jersey State Teacher of the Year salary and benefits during her six-month sabbatical. This will give Gillian peace of mind, knowing that her student learning will not be continuously disrupted during her term by the numerous speaking engagements and conferences she will attend on state and national levels. Thank you and to ETS for your generous support. Our other program partner here today is from the New Jersey Education Association, Ms. Patel Robertson, Vice President. Patel, if you wouldn't mind, please coming up to say a few words at this time.
My name sounds so lovely, but it's just Petal, like a flower. Good morning, everyone. My name is Petal Robertson. I am forever a high school English teacher and now the proud Vice President of the New Jersey Education Association. It is such an honor to be here to celebrate the teaching profession as well as a teacher who is the embodiment of educational excellence. Gillian Ober, thank you so much. And for all of our State Teachers of the Year in here, kudos to all of you and your humility. I might have worn "I am a State Teacher of the Year" shirt everywhere I go because teachers don't always get to experience the recognition they deserve. So it's wonderful to be here to witness the celebration of Ms. Ober's hard work and dedication to the profession. And we recognize that this new title holds a lot of weight. There is a ton of influence now in your hands. And it's my hope that you will use this to uphold the promise of public education being a socially just system. It's my hope that you continue to shine a light on the everyday wins of educators and all they do to prepare our youth to be kind, productive citizens of society. And we see you have already done that. It's my hope that you continue to be the shining example you are of why New Jersey schools continue to rank number one in the nation. And I know firsthand of our great public school employees and have every confidence that Ms. Ober will continue to highlight the level of excellence every New Jersey teacher possesses and will represent our profession with grace, style, and class. And now I get to be Santa. So let me tell you that NJA is so proud to partner with the New Jersey Department of Education, New Jersey School Boards, and Educational Testing Services on the Teacher of the Year program. And part of our longstanding tradition is to offer you more than just moral support. We're excited to provide you with a rental car equipped with EZ Pass to help you travel to your speaking engagements and meetings across the state. And inside of that car, we have provided you both a laptop and a printer. There you have complimentary access to all major NJA workshops and trainings of $1,500,000. Our treasurer is in the audience and her heart almost dropped out. A $1,500 clothing allowance, media training, I might come with you, and and communication support, funding for the Teacher of the Year trip to Washington, DC, so you can meet with other state teachers of the year from around the country, as well as the President of the United States. You will also receive guaranteed attendance to our NJA Celebration of Women, which we would be happy to celebrate you, an invitation to be a special guest at the National Education Association Foundation Salute to Excellence in Education Gala, a scholarship to attend the National Network of State Teachers of the Year Conference, a 2025 New Jersey State Teacher of the Year lapel pin, business cards, email address, and finally, a commemorative gold State Teacher of the Year ring. Ms. Ober will receive this support so that she knows how much her excellence is valued and appreciated. So on behalf of my fellow officers and every NJA member throughout the state, I wish you the very best as you embark on this incredible journey. We'll be cheering you on every single step of the way. And now I'll turn it back over to Dr. Schiff. Thank you.
Let's hear it for Petal. NJA continued support of the program is also so very much appreciated. Your generosity in providing a car, clothing allowance, all the travel expenses, among many other benefits for the year, so, so beneficial to Gillian. Thank you and NJEA for your generous support. I would now like to ask Gillian to please come up front and join with me, the Commissioner of the New Jersey Department of Education, Mr. Kevin Damer, and the State Board of Education President Kathy Goldenberg as we present you with the 2025-2026 New Jersey State Teacher of the Year Award and have your photo taken with it. Once again, a final big round of applause for the New Jersey State Teacher of the Year, Gillian Ober. Now I'd like to send the presentation back over to our Commissioner, Commissioner Damer.
Something specific I'm supposed to say, but I want to say this instead. So a little bit of a confession, I got to surprise her in our classroom to let her know. I've read all kinds of background on her and I hear her tell this story just a few minutes ago. And I felt it deep inside. And and that's why it's it's you, it's those, all of those folks out here that are teachers of the year. You are the ones that bring it to the next generation, not only to our students, but you inspire those those next generation of teachers. An old story I've told a lot of times, and I think all of us in the room can relate to it. There's that one teacher, maybe five teachers throughout your life that you've just really connected with that made such a world of difference. And we've got a whole collection of them in this room right now. And our newest one, Gillian, congratulations. I just, I can't tell you how moving it is to have you in this position. Congratulations.
Yeah. I also want to congratulate you and tell you I feel like the students who have gotten to share your passion and your vision and your leadership and and your support, they're so lucky. And we feel so blessed that you are the Teacher of the Year, and thank you for all you do. Thank you. So if we could, I would like to take a 10-minute break, please, because we need to let her go see the car and and photograph the moment that she gets to see everything.
There are those who are going through comprehensive reviews, which occur every three years. And what Dr. Duckett is referring to are interim reviews. Those are for districts that score below 80% in one of the five areas. So then they occur every six months. So we have concluded cohort three, who all went through four reviews this school year.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, very good.
So I think the hardest thing every month is when I look at CUSAC scores and where we are and, and where we're going. And we, last month, we read the names of the schools that achieved proficiency, which is a great thing. But in my mind, every school should be proficient. This is an instruction and programming, is where these schools are falling short. We celebrated today Teacher of the Year. We have such amazing teachers. I don't know how it is that we're still in this place. I keep saying next month's going to be better. I just heard my colleague say, good, we're going to see that upward trend. And I've been waiting for that. But I think it needs to be said for the public. 85 schools were up for CUSAC review. 44 were, reached the, the 80%. 41 did not. That's almost half of all the schools that went through CUSAC reviews didn't, are not proficient. Our, our lovely school rep used the word failed. And everybody says, oh, we don't want to use that. However, are we not failing some of our young people if we're not making sure in education and programming that they are proficient? And I know we work hard. We have great teachers. The Department of Ed works hard. I, I think, you know, even in our presentation, I, I'd love to see a PowerPoint up there. In years past, I've been on the board. It listed all the schools that were proficient and those that weren't. I'd love to see that back up there, that we're recognizing schools that are proficient, as they should be, schools that are not proficient. And we start to figure out a better way of making sure that we're not at the halfway point. This is not just a one-off. It has been a while now. I keep waiting. I know last year I said, hopefully it's going to be better. I, I really want us to try and figure out there's a reason why we're not hitting the mark. And, and there are scores here that are, yes, they're close. Some are 77, 78, 79. And then there's also 65, and 51, and 49, and 71. There are really schools that are, that's alarming to me. So I, I know you guys know this, but maybe we need to think about how else can we help these schools get where they need to be?
Well, you have to consider, with all due respect, that there's a number of factors that go into a school's performance. You look at socioeconomic status, you look at food insecurity, you look at housing insecurity, you look at what's taking place in this national government and how that impacts the state. That's going to impact local school districts. You have
Thank you very much. I believe that was from.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it. And may I please have a second? Second. Thank you so much. All right, we'll continue then. I'd like to turn the meeting over to the Commissioner for his items for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. The first standing item is for appointments. In this month, we do not have any appointments, so we can move right into Item B, which is certification for school districts of school districts. Since the September State Board meeting, the executive county superintendents have finalized eighty-five NJCUSAC evaluations for school districts. I'm recommending forty-four of those districts for certification. Mr. Ambrose Duckett and Robert Gregory have already stepped up to the plate, and they are able to answer the questions you've got. As I mentioned, there's forty-four districts up for certification, which are listed in your packet.
Thank you. Oh yeah, did you want to present anything?
Well, I just wanted to say we were continuing the positive trend, more districts certified than not certified. And some of the questions that were asked before, what are districts doing, and they're continuing to partner with the county offices and have targeted professional development to attack what we see as the biggest deficit, where we always see is districts that don't are not certified are usually because of Items One through Seven, which are instruction and program testing. So it'd be interesting to see with the new testing that's coming out, how our districts perform, but I believe as long as we're teaching to the standards, that we'll continue to see positive results. With that being said, I'll open the floor for any questions from board members.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Yes, ma'am. Please.
Good morning. So I guess I'd like to ask, or what are some basically opportunities for school districts after they basically failed to be certified?
That's an excellent, excellent question. Yes, so each district that is not certified has to go under a six-month review, and they are all the district in need of improvement, and they have to come up with a stiff improvement plan, and they meet with the county, and they talk about what strategies they're using to help out with those indicators, which are usually one through seven. So some of those opportunities are bringing in math specialists or ELA specialists to help support the teachers and working with the students.
And then one more would be, how long do certifications last for?
Three years.
Okay, thank you.
Great questions.
Thank you very much.
Great presentation before as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, please.
So I'm happy to see the upward trend. That's wonderful. But I can't help but notice that there's quite a few that are at that upper cusp, you know exactly what I'm going to say, seventy-nine. Are we looking very carefully to make sure that there's no way we can help? And not help, but ensure that they aren't there already. Make sure that they're at that, at that eighty.
There's a lot of back and forth. Thank you for your question, between our office, the county office, and the school districts. And we give them every opportunity to get over that threshold. So if it's seventy-nine point five, then it's eighty percent, and then they are certified, school districts. So yes, there's a lot of engagement, and the reason you're seeing certain districts that are taking so long is because of that back and forth engagement and getting in touch with the school district and seeing what we can do to see if we can get them over that threshold.
So confident that next round, we'll probably have them certified.
That's the goal. And going forward, we'll probably just be presenting interims. I think we're complete, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Gregory.
Yes, so two distinctions in the districts that we certify. There are those who are going through comprehensive reviews, which occur every three years, and what Dr. Duckett is referring to are interim reviews. Those are for districts that score below eighty percent in one of the five areas, so then they occur every six months. So we have concluded cohort three, who all went through four reviews this school year.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, very good.
So I think the hardest thing every month is when I look at CUSAC scores and where we are and where we're going. And we, last month, we read the names of the schools that achieved proficiency, which is a great thing, but in my mind, every school should be proficient. This is an instruction and programming, is where these schools are falling short. We celebrated today Teacher of the Year. We have such amazing teachers. I don't know how it is that we're still in this place. I keep saying next month's going to be better. I just heard my colleagues say, good, we're going to see that upward trend. And I've been waiting for that, but I think it needs to be said for the public. Eighty-five schools were up for CUSAC review. Forty-four were reached the eighty percent. Forty-one did not. That's almost half of all the schools that went through CUSAC reviews didn't, are not proficient. Our lovely school rep used the word failed, and everybody says, oh, we don't want to use that. However, are we not failing some of our young people if we're not making sure in education and programming that they are proficient? And I know we work hard. We have great teachers. The Department of Ed works hard. I think, you know, even in our presentation, I love to see a PowerPoint up there. In years past, I've been on the board. It listed all the schools that were proficient and those that weren't. I'd love to see that back up there, that we're recognizing schools that are proficient, as they should be, schools that are not proficient, and we start to figure out a better way of making sure that we're not at the halfway point. This is not just a one-off. It has been a while now. I keep waiting. I know last year I said, hopefully, it's going to be better. I really want us to try and figure out there's a reason why we're not hitting the mark. And there are scores here that are, yes, they're close. Some are seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, and then there's also sixty-five, and fifty-one, and forty-nine, and seventy-one. There are really schools that are, that's alarming to me. So I know you guys know this, but maybe we need to think about how else can we help these schools get where they need to be?
Well, you have to consider, with all due respect, that there's a number of factors that go into a school's performance. You look at socioeconomic status, you look at food insecurity, you look at housing insecurity, you look at what's taking place in this national government and how that impacts the state. That's going to impact local school districts. You have some students that go home to two-parent, college-educated families. You go to some school districts where you have a high level of foster families. So those all factors impact how students perform on assessment. And so you can meet their socioeconomic needs, their social needs, their food needs, their housing needs, you know, their educational needs, sometimes come fourth and fifth, and their homes, and then their schools. So there's a lot of factors at play, and it's not about the teaching, but it's about sometimes the environment that the children are coming from. So.
How can we, how can we improve that? How do we help then, if you're saying that at certain schools, I mean, I was looking at the schools and what the breakdown is. I want to do more. I want us to be doing more than, if you're saying these are problems, what can we do to bring those schools up?
So, and I just want to cut in, and I, so I really appreciate the question and this continual dialogue, I think we've had. And I think, first of all, over the last several months, you've seen a significant change in the numbers that have been, that reached the eighty percent benchmark, to be what we call high-performing. So I want to, I want to norm some terms. Fail is not part of this, and also proficient is not part of this. There's high performing and then in need of improvement. This is the process. This is it. The process that we use to identify when a district or where a district or specific areas where the department needs to dig in, this is it. So when we say, what can we do? This is really where we dig in to get into more granular areas of performance in a district to really engage more directly with the district and say, okay, you're doing very well here, but over here, this is where we need to provide some additional assistance. So this is part of that process. So I don't want anybody to look at this list and say, you didn't get across eighty percent, and you're a failure and not proficient. That is not what this is, and those are not terms that we use in this context. When somebody's at seventy-nine percent, what we're doing then is going back and looking between those twenty-one points, where specifically do we need to continue to grow in that district? And it could be a whole host of reasons, and that's why it's partnership between the district and the DOE and our county office to really hone in and figure out where can we make those improvements. But this is that process. It's not to say we failed because we got to seventy-nine instead of eighty-one. That's not what this is. This is identifying those areas, why it's not at eighty, and heck, I, there are a whole host of districts here that got to eighty-one that are going, all right, there's nineteen points to go. We've got some work to do. So that eighty-point benchmark is not, that's important, but it's not end-all, be-all. Our work is structured around these areas, but then it's not a binary yes or no thing. It's not a pass or fail. It's high performing, and it's areas where we continue to focus on improvement. And so our resources go into that more granular work to dig in where we are not seeing improvements or that there's additional growth that we think we can, we can help the district achieve. So this is an ongoing process, and that's why Robert talked about how we do a three-year review, but then there's a six-month interim where we're digging in more closely with districts. So this is more of a continue, it's literally called a continuum for a reason, because this is an ongoing cycle to make sure that we're, that we're digging in. It's not really kind of what we think about it where it's this point in time. It's much more of an ongoing cycle.
Thank you. I believe that Arcilio Pante, our ex-president for the State Board, has a comment to make or a question. Please, you have the floor.
Hello, everyone. I certainly appreciate Mary Beth's comments and the Commissioner's response, just looking at the, from the perspective of the school districts that, you know, are just under that threshold. What's, do they feel supported? Do they feel as if they failed? Or they feel that they are on a path and being supported by the department? Are they, again, just feeling overall that they're making progress towards that eighty percent mark? What's the perspective of the districts?
When our county offices interact with school districts, especially during the six-month interim reviews, one of the things we're doing is looking at their formative or quarterly assessments to see how the district may fare on an annual state assessment. So one of the things that's important to understand is, while districts who are not certified as high-performing in areas that don't fall under instruction and program, they have opportunities to improve every six months. Whereas a district who is not certified as high-performing for indicators one through seven only have that opportunity annually. So those districts we see at the seventy-nine percent threshold, generally speaking, when we check in with them, they are predicting to us, the next time state assessments come out, we know we will be over the eighty percent threshold. We always present this as an opportunity for improvement. To the Commissioner's point, there are districts, I have superintendents who'll call me and say, Robert, why did I get a ninety-nine in this area? I want to get that hundred percent. It's a continuum of improvement, and that's what this cycle is all about.
Thank you very much. I believe next we have our Vice President, who, I'm sorry, what?
No, no, I just mentioned, thank you, Robert. I appreciate the response.
Okay, thank you, Arcilio. Dr. Johnson, you have a.
Thank you. More of a comment. And I guess it's been about eight years, but I do recall being in the district, and those district improvement plans are really the roadmap to how you get to where you need to be. And I know I always found that collaborative, that co-opportunity, working with the county office to move the district forward, where you actually look at the data, and one of the questions I know I've always had in regards to assessment, and I do remember way back where the department was starting to work on assessments other than the annual assessments, that would be more in line with those annual assessments, to help give districts better data. There are so many different, I guess, you know, assessments out there, and they're not always in alignment with what the department or the state is asking for. So how can we recalibrate to get those things like MAP or whatever tool they're using to be more in alignment with the transition to this new state assessment in particular?
Yeah, during the collaborative, collaborative portion of developing the district improvement plan, one of the things our county ed specialists have conversations with school districts about are the interim assessments that they are using and ensuring that those assessments are aligned to the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment. Of course, we can't dictate what a school district board of education may adopt as a quarterly interim assessment system, but we certainly make recommendations and look at items on assessments to ensure they are aligned. Ultimately, the chief school administrator and the district board of education makes the decision on what systems they purchase.
And just one follow-up. Once again, going back to my prior experience, when there were common identified areas where multiple districts were maybe struggling, the department used to have combined or like regional types of professional development opportunities so that they're all looking through the same lens, so to speak, as to, this is what the state is saying that they want. Here's a instrument that might help you get there. It would probably be in your best interest and your students maybe to do that, even if you're not forcing them, but to gently guide them into maybe some areas that might be more beneficial.
And we still do that through our county curriculum consortiums, which occur in all three regions of the state.
And most recently, Dr. Johnson, that was focused on science, because a lot of our schools did so poorly on the science assessment. So there was almost a standard setting and resetting discussion that happened at the county level, led by the county ed specialists, but with those districts that were listed as not certified districts in need of improvement that had to create a plan. So that is occurring. Yes.
Thank you for that information. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, we have Board Member Elaine Bobrov with a question or a comment. Your, your mic is off at the moment. Elaine, you need to unmute yourself.
I'm unmuted. I was saying that I think the two are combined, but how are we doing in getting appropriate teachers into the schools? Because there was a large problem with not getting enough teachers to do the things that needed to be done. That's one thing. And then, you know, how we deal with our students? Has Camden come together yet with a leadership that's, that's going to be running Camden and keep it going? Do they have the teachers? Do they have what's going on with it, with the need there? And I'm just picking Camden at random at this time, but I think you all know what, we've been talking about this and talking about it. So do we have the teachers available who want to teach? And that's the biggest question.
So, thank you, Elaine. It's a question I think we've been discussing, you know, rigorously in the state for a number of years. So I think it's a good chance to follow up on that. The, the governor pulled together a task force, I think it was in twenty-two, starting in twenty-two, and that task force outlined a series of recommendations, and we as a state have proceeded with a number of those to bolster the ranks of our teachers. And so I think we've seen a lot of those, not only have we put those in place, we've, we've seen the fruits of the labor. Not too long ago, we saw a presentation of some folks taking, taking, availing themselves of some flexibilities and getting certification. But also, we've done other approaches in partnership with other, other colleagues across the state. And so that's giving teachers stipends when they're doing their student teaching, or that's defraying debt that teachers take on. So all these things come into play, working with our EPP partners to make sure there's alignment across the board to, again, further bring people into the fold. So I think that we have seen improvement in this, and the, what we saw kind of really coming right out of the pandemic, in terms of teacher shortages and things like that. I think we've made a lot of progress on that. You also alluded to the Camden superintendent search, which is well underway. There is an interim superintendent in place, and work continues there. Obviously, the school year has opened up, and I think we're on a good track through this search process. Again, national search takes, takes a little bit of time, but I think we're going to, going to be moving along with that that shortly. No news to make today, but I think keep an eye on it. We'll be moving along quickly with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there more? I'm sorry, Elaine, did you have anything else to add?
No, I was, hang on. I was just saying thank you for responding to what I had asked. Can you hear me? No.
Yes, yes, we've got it. Thank you, Elaine. I believe those meetings that you were speaking about that are in the counties, I can't remember if I was there as a local board of ed member or a state board member, but I know that there were ones that we were invited to, not just the districts struggling, but everybody, so that everybody's on the same page. That may be something to consider in the future.
Right. And we also work in close collaboration with Dr. Schiff and the standards team. So they often come and present at our executive county superintendent meetings about the new standards that are being rolled out, just so we can push in and make sure that all districts have the proper information, the most recent updated information.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Dr. Duckett. Okay, so the forty-four districts, I would love for them to be read out, but I guess, I guess.
I, I promise you, next month, they will put them on a PowerPoint, so we'll make sure everybody can read them, so you don't have to listen to me read them. They are, by the way, this is not, this is posted on our website. It's available ahead of the meetings, and all the board members receive the list. So I don't want to make it seem like we're concealing the list of individuals, but next month, I promise.
I just want to celebrate them, but I will take that for today. All right, so may I please?
Pardon me, President Goldenberg. Can I quickly mention something?
Yes.
I would like to briefly apologize for my prior use of the word failure or failed, but I guess the word I want to use better is basically not earning the certification and once learning really the continuation that the Board of Education and the Department of Education really works for with those school districts, really changed my perspective. I just want to quickly apologize for wording.
You don't, you don't. No, no, not at all.
I'm actually happy that that was brought forward, that we all learned together, that it's, it's something that's a work in progress.
Thank you for handling.
Hey, Elaine, I'm going to tell them myself. I use that when I first presented at the State Board, so no mistake.
You're not the first, you're not the last, and I will continue to make that point. But the reason I brought that up, and I, this is literally not to pick on you, I wanted to really emphasize, because that, we fall into that word, and we can't, we can't use failure to represent our, all of the folks involved, whether that's students, parents, educators, administrators, working very hard to help those kids learn and achieve. And so that word should not appear anywhere in our conversation. And I, and it's, it's something that we slip into, because it's an easy way to, it's a quick one-word way to describe all of that, and maybe not quite getting there. So it is not a reflection on you or anybody else in this room. I always take that opportunity to build up that we are on, you know, it's, it's a, it's a progress. It's a roadmap, as Ned mentioned earlier. So this is a lot of work that goes into this, and I think that's the thing I really want to highlight whenever we have this conversation. But thank you, and please, no, don't walk out here with any, feel like you needed to apologize in any way at all.
Okay, thank you. So any other questions or comments at this time? Hearing none, I'd like to please ask for a motion to accept the certification of our fabulous forty-four school districts who have had such a grand achievement. Everyone should look at the list and enjoy them. All those, yes, ma'am, thank you. May I please have a second? Thank you very much, Jeanette. Any other discussion at this time? And any, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify please by saying nay. Any abstentions to a conflict of interest or anything, please let us know at this time. Hearing none, the motion carries unanimously. So thank you for your efforts. Thank you, thank you. Okay.
I appreciate any opportunity to give Ambrose a little more work, so appreciate it. Thank you, guys. So now we can move on to Item C in the agenda. And today, I present for your consideration the readoption of NJAC six A, Subchapter Eight, Standards and Assessment, with amendments and new rules. This chapter serves as a foundation for New Jersey's academic standards, statewide assessment system, ensuring that all students are prepared for post-secondary education, meaningful careers, and civic life. The proposed amendments, excuse me, amendments reflect our commitment to clarity, equity, and continuous improvement. They also align the regulations with current state and federal laws. They update terminology to reflect modern educational practices and respond to extensive public feedback received throughout the rulemaking process. Notably, the amendments strengthen inclusive curriculum requirements, expand access to advanced coursework, and reinforce our focus on evidence-based literacy instructional and career, instruction and career readiness. These amendments also streamline provisions, provide, remove expired programs, and enhance transparency for families and communities. This readoption maintains and continues our dedication to high-quality instruction and accountability while providing districts with flexibility and support needed to meet the diverse needs of New Jersey's learners. And I see Dr. Jordan Ship and Lisa Habrel have already joined us to walk us through in more detail.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning, President Goldenberg, Vice President Johnson, and members of the State Board of Education. We are pleased to join you today to present for adoption the New Jersey Administrative Code, Chapter Eight, Standards and Assessment.
This morning, we would like to address the following areas with you as we review the revisions.
the revisions in the chapter proposed for adoption today. We will begin by discussing the overarching goals of the proposed amendments and identify themes in public comments that we have received. We will share with you the response of revisions to the chapter resulting from public comment and other agency-initiated changes, and would be pleased to take any questions you may have at the end of the presentation.
Back in February, you may recall, we introduced a set of proposed amendments aimed at updating, refining, and simplifying existing rules and procedures. Some of these changes are designed to better align terminology and practices with both federal and state laws. A central goal of the proposal is to ensure that instructional programs are responsive to the diverse needs of all students. This includes a stronger emphasis on designing and delivering curriculum that supports every learner. The amendments also highlight the importance of expanding access to advanced coursework and fostering civic engagement and information literacy. Preparing students for success beyond high school, whether in college, careers, or the modern workforce, is a renewed focus of this chapter's revisions. To support this, the proposal strengthens career readiness through enhanced career counseling, work-based learning opportunities, and dual enrollment pathways. Additionally, the revisions clarify expectations around authentic learning experiences and individualized student learning options. Finally, the proposal introduces mechanisms for continuous improvement. These include clearer accountability measures such as corrective action plans for noncompliance with the New Jersey's student learning standards, updated professional learning requirements, and the use of disaggregated data to monitor and improve student outcomes.
Overall, the comments we received only required non-substantive revisions. These revisions provide additional clarity on the meaning and impact of the department's proposal. To the comments that did not require any revisions, we did receive a set of comments expressing overall support for the rules, including support for making advanced coursework more accessible to all learners, support for promoting information literacy and media education, and support for preserving multiple graduation pathways.
For additional comments that did not require any revisions, many were mistakenly directed at the previous version of this rulemaking. There were a large number of comments referencing on an, um, referencing on an earlier version of the rules addressing graduation credits assigned for ESL coursework taught by certain instructors. These rules were removed at proposal level prior to the comments being received, so they no longer applied. Another set of comments were better suited for the current standard review process rather than Chapter 8 amendments. The commonalities and critical nuances among computer science, technology education, and educational technology require careful consideration and deliberation by expert educators in these fields. The level of detail required for the implementation of the NJSLS in these areas is foundational to the standards review process, which is designed to include and support such deliberation and consensus building. As a result, the commenters were redirected and invited to engage in the standard review process, as the comments were focused specifically on revisions to computer science and technology education standards, which is outside the scope of the administrative code review process.
Next, we would like to address the comments that required non-substantive clarifications. These are available in their entirety within your materials and posted online for the public to review. Those themes included requests for guidance, outreach, and support concerning certification exemptions for individual student learning opportunities. In response to these comments, we clarified that section of the code. There are minor, some minor grammatical and syntax errors, and an additional reference to a relevant law that was passed in between discussions.
Can, can we ask questions as we go along? Um, just, I, I know we spent a lot of time in committee talking about the old option one or option two, and how the new independent, um, student learning opportunities are going to be more broader, they're going to be more expansive. Can you talk a little bit more about the kind of feedback that you got about things that, uh, districts might be planning to do around that extra opportunity to, uh, have kids work independently?
Yeah, the, the intent was to provide more opportunities for creative thinking, kind of out-of-the-box thinking. And we provided language within the code that, um, I think provided more clarity for practitioners, and we were working with, um, with other stakeholders based upon the feedback that they gave us through their, through their comments to do just that. In fact, we made some modifications that we'll be going over that, um, are particular to the option two, which is the, um, independent student learning opportunities that will, were intended to clarify what we meant and, uh, to ensure that there was, uh, a clear understanding within the field as to what's inside the box and what's outside the box, what's allowable and, and what wouldn't be allowable. So I think-
I think that was the problem before, why people weren't really taking advantage of it, because they didn't really know what does that look like, right?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And, and we found, um, many of the comments, uh, in CTE programs, career and technical education programs, where, uh, where there is a great deal of innovative thinking. So we wanted to provide opportunities that, um, that weren't barriers for, uh, for students to be able to demonstrate understanding in very creative ways.
And those are decided within the district, correct?
They, they are, um, but they have to align to the code.
Right.
Not, not in these cases, but, um, they could be challenged by, by people that, that may have concerns about what a district has, and then we would, we would involve ourselves with that. But these are district-level decisions, but they need to understand what, what are the guardrails in terms of what's allowable? Um, so, you know, specifically, uh, aligned to certain teacher certifications about what they would teach directly, what they would consult with, um, on, on these type of independent programs, I think is very important. So that, that's what we sought to clarify.
And just one final thing, uh, for, for the backend, uh, once they are in effect, could you be, could you start to collect data on like who is availing or how many districts are now going to avail themselves and actually use that opportunity?
Yeah, they're not required to report that, that data, and, um, in the past, we asked for that information through a study that was commissioned by-
The Region Four.
Region Four, one of, one of our comprehensive support, um, uh, federal agencies or cooperating with, with the federal government to, um, to do that type of research. Uh, but we, we can certainly ask for that information.
Maybe at county, um, roundtables that you have, that would be a good subject matter just to query-
Yeah.
And to have them get back to you the following month.
Because the power of this is really sharing those innovations, so that, and that's what-
We all have to communicate. Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, so, did we vote on that yet?
We need to continue our-
Okay, we're still, I'm sorry.
If you don't mind. We're in seven?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We will now explore the changes that appear at adoption level. Commenters submitted that the proposed amendments for 5 dot 1A 2I 1 didn't clearly separate out the unique individualized student learning opportunities exceptions, as we're just talking about, for career and technical education, work-based learning, and dual enrollment. Instead, commenters suggested that they appeared to bundle all three conditions under a single set of rules, which they stated could lead to confusion and limit student access to these programs. In response, what we did was we agreed and clarified that each scenario should have its own distinct requirement by adding the language, quote, "except as follows," unquote, to distinguish the three exceptions. This proposal of further amendments is intended to ensure flexibility and prevent misinterpretation, allowing districts to tailor these unique learning experiences for students without encountering unnecessary barriers. This change supports broader access to meaningful individualized learning opportunities for students specifically for those programs that include approved CTE programs, work-based learning, and dual enrollment experiences.
Finally, as mentioned a moment ago, we also made grammatical and syntax changes, corrected typographical errors, and added a reference to a new law that was passed in between discussions.
We thank you for your time and attention, and we will be pleased to answer any further questions that you may-
Any questions at this time from our board? Uh, and our, and our students? All right, um, in that case, may I please have a motion to accept this standard assessment adoption, um, as delivered today? May I please have a motion? Thank you. May I please have a second? Thank you very much. Um, before we vote, are you sure there are no more questions about any of this comments?
I'd just like to thank Dr. Johnson for his question. That was something that I was interested in. I, I love the whole option two. Um, there's so many great things that are out there. I, I think the idea that county superintendents and people talking amongst one another, those roundtables, could be really valuable, because I think a lot of people are, this, these are great ideas, and there is so much innovation out there. Um, but those opportunities for people really put it on the agenda to be discussing this, how other people are doing it, may really just light a little more fire, um, under it. This, these are exciting opportunities I want kids to be able to avail themselves of.
Thank you.
Okay, so, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed, please signify by saying nay. Any abstentions on this? Hearing none, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much for your work. Appreciate it, and for finding new ways and better ways for kids to excel. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Moving on to item D in our agenda, um, and this was alluded to before by the president. Um, I now present the department's proposal to amend the rules at NJAC 6A colon 9B that governs certification for school nurses. And today's presentation centers on a rulemaking petition that was submitted earlier this year, which sought to modernize and align the certification requirements for school nurses with New Jersey's participation in the Nurse Licenseur Compact, or the NLC. This was brought to us by Rosemary Catton, who is a registered nurse and the executive director of the New Jersey School Nurse Association. So I want to thank her for bringing this to our attention. The NLC is a multi-state agreement that allows registered nurses to practice, to practice across state lines with a single license, provided that they meet uniform licensure requirements. Under the current regulations, school nurse candidates must hold a New Jersey-issued registered, uh, professional nurse license, even if they already possess a valid multi-state license from another NLC member state. This requirement has created unnecessary barriers for qualified professionals seeking to serve in New Jersey schools. The proposed amendments are not only consistent with our commitment to regulatory clarity and fairness, but they're also essential to expanding the pool of qualified school nurse candidates at a time when demand is high and recruiting is challenging. So joining us, uh, now are Dr. Schiff and Ronnie Singh, who will walk us through, uh, the changes that we're proposing.
Thank you again, Commissioner, and we do want to express our appreciation for expediting this process. This will help us to fill positions in school nursing and, and substitute school nurses, uh, throughout the state. Uh, today-
Sorry, before you begin, I, I, I want to thank both the two of you, but also, uh, President Goldenberg. We've had a lot of, uh, deep and serious conversations about this, uh, when, since we got the petition, so I appreciate everyone's flexibility and hard work on this.
Thank you. Thank you. Today, we would like to walk you through a few proposed amendments for the, um, of the New Jersey Administrative Code, Chapter 9B, related to, as the Commissioner alluded to, and as our, our president, um, referenced at the beginning of her, of this meeting through her remarks, to the multi-state nurse licensure and school nursing credential.
On May 5th, 2025, a rulemaking petition was submitted requesting amendments to NJAC 6A 9B 7.5 and 14.3. The goal was to allow holders of a multi-state registered nurse license, which is issued by any nurse licensure compact NLC member state, to qualify for New Jersey school nurse credentials. New Jersey is currently a member of the NLC, and as a member, New Jersey issues multi-state licenses that allow holders the privilege of practice in New Jersey as well as other member states. Over the spring and summer, we consulted with the Division of Consumer Affairs and the New Jersey Board of Nursing, who are responsible for licensure and oversight of registered professional nurses. In September, the petition was granted, and the department elected to expand the scope to include additional amendments to NJAC 6A 9B 14.4.
New Jersey is one of 43 states participating in the Nurse Licenseur Compact. As a member, we issue multi-state licenses to eligible nurses, allowing them to practice in New Jersey and other NLC states. Importantly, our colleagues at DCA confirmed that the multi-state licenses meet the same competency standards as a New Jersey single-state licensed us. Therefore, it's logical and consistent to recognize multi-state licenses issued by other NLC states for school nurse credentialing in New Jersey.
Currently, New Jersey regulations require a New Jersey-issued nurse license for school nurse credentials. This restricts the candidate pool, even though many nurses working in our New Jersey hospitals and clinics hold multi-state licenses from other NLC states. By expanding eligibility to include multi-state licenses, we can reduce barriers and increase access to qualified school nurse candidates, which is an area of significant need across our schools.
The first proposed amendment is the NJAC 6A colon 9B dash 7 dot 5. This change allows the Board of Examiners to issue substitute school nurse non-instructional credentials to holders of either a New Jersey-issued nurse license or a valid multi-state license from an NLC member state.
Next, we propose amending NJAC 6A 9B 14.3, which governs the school nurse endorsement. The amendment adds language to recognize multi-state licenses issued by other NLC states as valid for credentialing purposes.
Finally, we propose changes to NJAC 6A colon 9B dash 14 dot 4, which addresses the school nurse non-instructional endorsement. This includes recognizing multi-state licenses for both standard and emergency certification pathways, provided the candidate also meets educational NCPR AED requirements. We thank you for your time and attention, and are available to answer any of your questions at this time.
Thank you. Um, to me, I don't, I know this was a no-brainer, because the certifications in 43 states, I believe you, you mentioned. When I was a local Board of Ed member, it was always hard to find nurses that were qualified to go into our schools, and a, a student needs to have that for bee sting or anything else they need immediately and not call another school to have someone come. So I'm so delighted to, for your ex, that you were able to expedite this, to move forward on this as soon as we could, and I'm very grateful. I hope that we can all appreciate the work of the DOE getting this going, because, uh, it, it's tremendous, I think, for our students, for our administrators of each school. So thank you for that. Um, yes, ma'am, I see you have a question, please.
Well, I'll just quickly ask. So I know that this amendment was started by proposal through petition. How many signatures were on the petition?
I don't know if there were actual signatures that are on the petition. It was a, it was a single request from a person who is, um,
In the field.
Who actually leads, um, organization, this, uh, nursing organizations. And what she pointed out was that our current code is actually a barrier, because our code says only a New Jersey-issued, um, school nursing or nursing license could qualify for someone to become a school nurse in New Jersey. So what this does is it recognizes a multi-state license that New Jersey recognizes already. There are nurses practicing in New Jersey hospitals, in clinics, all across the state with this multi-state compact license.
Right across the borders, if I- Right across the borders, if I may interrupt, you know, Pennsylvania and New York and all the areas that we border, it allows their people to come to our schools.
Yes, okay, so it was one person who was a part of slash representing a larger organization.
Yeah, but we've heard about it from others also, nurses that have been denied their certifications.
Just the technical term when somebody brings to the state board a request to change rules is a petition for rulemaking. So it's not a petition which were with like a lot of signatures. It's a petition to the board to consider the rulemaking. It can be brought by an individual or a group.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So we vote on this next month. Great, but if anyone in the public has any comments or concerns or would like to write in to us, please do. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. So as far as the work session, we actually have training to follow this meeting. So the public knows that. Great, but do you have anything else today? Thank you. Thank you all so much. I hope that your fall is lovely and you enjoy the change of season that's about to occur. And I would like to please ask for a motion to adjourn. Thank you. May I please have a second? Thank you very much. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And not in favor, please say nay. No abstentions, I'm sure. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful October, everyone. Thank you. See you in November.